See what happens. It claims to be in progress, so this is the first session in September of two thousand and twenty five of the new economics discussion series sponsored by into in thinking network. And it's. I'm Tim Higgins, the president of into in thinking, and I welcome you all. What I'd like to do is go around and quickly get an idea, I know with some of you, whether you're a beginner or whether you're sort of some experience with Deming, or whether you're pretty knowledgeable or about Deming. I think I'm pretty knowledgeable, but I've only read the book forty times, so maybe, maybe have more to go. Every time I read it, I find something I missed, so let's go around. How about Mike?
All right, Mike Gaethol, I live in Wisconsin, just north of Madison. I met a number of you at the in thinking workshop in July in Santa Clarita.
Yeah, we got, we got an echo. Have you got two speakers on?
No.
If everyone else mutes, it might be helpful.
Yeah, folks that aren't talking should probably mute. We'll see if that helps.
Try. How's that? That seems better.
Yeah.
All right. So my name is Mike Gaethol. I live in near Madison, Wisconsin. I met a number of you in July in Santa Clarita. My first joining of that, that workshop was fantastic. I would say I'm somewhere between a beginner and a, you know, I am applying Deming in my work.
Good, thanks. Steve?
Hi, I'm Steve Byers. I'm in Olympia, Washington, and I have been studying Dr. Deming's work since about nineteen ninety six or seven, yeah, my first exposure, so, and I've been to, I think, just about all of the in to in forums over the years, so.
Thanks, Steve. Yosh.
Hey, good afternoon. Yosh Miki, retired engineering director from aerospace. And let's see, I got involved with Tim and Bill and other folks associated with Intuit and Deming. About two thousand, honestly, about two thousand and seven or so, I'm kind of a late comer to the game. I would describe myself as a reformed DFSS black belt, a Six Sigma black belt. Once I got frustrated was that I started exploring for other ways of improving organizations and processes because that Six Sigma stuff is very, I don't know, I won't get into that. Anyways, looking around, I stumbled across Bill's, Bill and Tim's activity at Rocketdyne. And I would describe myself now as a student of and somewhat successful practitioner of Deming practices. But it helped me kind of the last couple of years of my time as an engineering director, you know, second tier aerospace organization and made things a lot more easier for me to manage a group or work within the company and navigate. And I'm just trying to get people involved more and more. If people are interested, I try to get them hooked up with an Intuit group as well. You know, that's, that's not it.
Okay, Jeff Zimmerman. He's having trouble with his mic, so he's just gonna listen. He's excited about that. Ben?
My name's Ben Lau. I live in Mountain View, California. I've been a software engineer for about twenty eight years. I got into or started to explore Deming's work in like twenty twelve or twenty thirteen in an effort to try and better understand the type of work I do, which is in the release engineering space, which is taking software and products and getting them shipped. And been on a deeper dive into that topic, and this seemed like a good forum to explore for.
Thanks. Dick?
Hello, everybody. Dirk Van Button. I'm a quality manager for a semiconductor design company, manufacturing company. I used to live in San Jose, California. I now live in a little tiny town called Holland, Michigan, work from home. I became interested in Deming and the in to in thing, Thinking Network. And I'm going to say early two thousands, two thousand four, but and getting ready for this, I don't know if you can see this. But I have my, my camera doesn't look like it's doing very well, but anyways, my notebook and the department is thinking and the subject is mentoring with Bill, and it was all my Bill Bellows notebooks, et cetera. And the last entry is from September twelfth, two thousand sixteen, almost exactly nine years ago. And it was the seven day study of the new economics with Tim. So I can't believe the coincidence of it in my notes. So I'm going to compare what I thought I knew nine years ago to what I, what we talk about now, and I'm so excited. So really happy to be here. Thank you.
That's always interesting with these discussions is that new things come up that you haven't thought of. Somebody else has, and it sparks new thinking in yourself. It's really intriguing. Scott Wilson?
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me clear?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm in a rural Iowa right now. I'm working a contract project. I do team facilitation and project delivery and life sciences and biotech. I've been doing it for a couple decades, and what I say on my tagline is elevating medicine manufacturing outcomes. And basically, I'm a program managed, project managed, but I, I do what I can to, and it's not really conscious. It's kind of like, you know, the Dem, Deming and Bill, I met Bill in twenty, I want to say twenty fifteen timeframe. I believe I met you there too at Rocketdyne. Bill invited me to Rocketdyne to those in-house. And then I've been staying in touch since then, and I just, yeah, I just always get so much from being with people that think or, or just they, I want to say it's beyond thinking. It's somebody said it in one of the last seminars, and then I'll stop there. It's, it's not thinking Deming, it's being Deming, or he's, you know, something to that effect, right? It's, I think it's beyond intellect. But anyway, I'll, I'll say thank you, and I look forward to participating with you all. It's my first book, book, study group, so thank you for inviting me.
Thank you for joining. I have, the only connection I have with Iowa is my kid went to Cornell there in, in Mount Vernon.
Isn't, isn't, don't you mean Grinnell? Not Cornell?
No, Cornell, Cornell.
Oh, was there a Cornell there too?
Cornell College and founded by a cousin of the one that founded the Cornell.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, there's Cornell, Cornell College, believe it or not, yeah.
My residence is in Diamond Bar. I go back and forth California.
Oh, Diamond Bar is nice.
I'm just out here for, for work, otherwise I, yeah, I'd be back in, in the West.
There's a lot of good food out there.
Let's poke around a little bit at the, with the words, some words were not by Deming, but as the forewords.
I can know.
Did we hear from Cole? You haven't heard from Cole?
Yeah.
Sorry, Cole.
No, no worries. I'm Cole Callistra, based in Punta Gorda, Florida, so on the west coast near Fort Myers. I work for, I'm an architect for Google Cloud, just joined there a couple months ago. I've been, I did five years at Amazon Web Services before that, been in IT my whole career. My experience, I would say I'm definitely on the beginner side of Deming. Most of my introduction to Deming has been through John Willis, through his podcasts and his talks and things like that. I actually just finished his book on Deming over the weekend, so. Yeah, and it's just popped into my LinkedIn feed, so I was like, oh, that sounds pretty cool, so really excited to join.
Thanks, sorry, Cole. Hey, I'm, I'm not as good at working this as I could be. There's a forward to the third edition and a forward to the second edition that you may have read was part of the reading assignment. I was wondering if there's anything you saw in there. I know there was talk about transformation, and I want to mention something. Deming got his PhD in mathematical physics in nineteen twenty eight. And when Deming talks about a transformation, he talks about a fundamental shift. And talk about a fundamental shift while he was studying physics, they were moving from Newton to, to quantum mechanics and, and from determinism to probabilistic ways of view in the world. That's a huge, a huge transformation. It's not just a little tweak. So when he uses the word transformation, he's looking for something substantial. Anybody see anything else there that struck them or bothered them they'd like to talk about?
I think, I think that's, I think the thing that's always appealed to me about Deming is, and I remember first hearing about the four day seminars and that he literally passed away a short time after his last, last four day. And the, so I have a second edition, so on the forward, it talks about him literally editing his manuscript up until the time he died, and I, I look at that and go, that's, that, that's a model I want. There's a guy I want to follow. I want to be in my eighties and nineties and still learning, still being curious. So I, that, that just has always appealed to me since I've, I've learned about him, and that, that stuck out to me.
The, yeah, the people that worked with him talk about the fact that he was, he was, he, he was nervous. He wasn't to be able to get everything out to everybody that needed to hear it and spent a lot of time trying to make it happen with those four day seminars. Bill attended, I think, the last one. It was either the last one or the second, the last one. I didn't get to attend one. I went to one where they were doing them with people who work with Deming. They still do, and they use Deming videos for the Deming part, and then the people assist, which is kind of the way the, the four days went anyway. Yeah, that's, if you, if you haven't been to a four day seminar and you get a chance, it'll be worth your while. What else?
Well, I'm, I, I like the, right, in the, in the forward to the third edition, right? The Kevin was talking about learning to learn, and I feel like that's, that's the, right? That, that is really the, like, at the base, right? Deming spends a lot of time talking about education, like, over and over and over and over. It's like a repeated theme. He's like, you gotta learn things, right? And become more educated about everything, because that's how you do anything. And, and that, that's been my own focus, and so I was like, I really gravitate to that, that aspect of things.
Yeah, I really like that idea too. It's the, and, and the, and the, the learning part of, part of learning how to learn is learning how to ask questions and, and then process the answers. Too frequently, we, we make decisions instead of asking questions. And asking questions is a much better way to, to learn. And listening to others' questions and, and formulating something to respond also helps with the learning.
One thing that strikes me right now, Tim, is that when I think about other influences in my life, other people have written, you know, influential books, meaningful books. I can't think of too many that have had, you know, a third update, a third edition come out. I think the fifth discipline had a second edition come out in two thousand and nine, maybe. But if I think about, you know, other, other authors, other writers that, you know, quite good, quite helpful, et cetera. But this seems to have some legs.
Yeah, the interesting thing I found about it is even the same edition, I've read it over and over again. And, and at least every third time through, I find something I never saw before. And it comes from talking to people like you and getting ideas from people like you. And then later, when I read the book, I have an additional perspective I didn't have before. So things appear suddenly, and I, I swear it wasn't in the, in the edition I read before, but there it is.
We're, we're all, all new people every once in a while.
Yes. So the aim of the book. The aim of this book is to start the reader on the road to knowledge and to create a yearning for more knowledge. That yearning is, creating that yearning is critical to helping people go on and keep moving. So this is where it's, it's interesting, conceptually. This book contains his theory that the fourteen points came from. But he came up with the fourteen points, wrote them and explained them, and he had a theory all the time. He just hadn't codified it. And what happened with the new economics with, with a system of profound knowledge is he codified his theory in essence. And it's interesting to think about the fact that this was his theory in nineteen ninety, and we're thirty odd years later. The theory might be, might have changed some in all of those years. But even if it, if it hasn't changed, it's a pretty darn good theory. I, I, I haven't seen a better one for, for managing an organization or just looking at the world around you and saying, how do I understand this world?
I found it interesting that it was those around him that helped. So he had the theory, he talked about it, but he hadn't found a way to, I think, describe it. And I forget where it talks about it, but he had outside help that helped him sort of synthesize everything and get it into the, the system of profound knowledge.
Yeah, Claire Crawford Mason used to challenge him all the time when he said, there's no substitute for knowledge, and she'd say, what knowledge? And one day he said profound knowledge, and she said, what's profound knowledge? So there is, there's a lot going on, yeah. And, and I remember seeing an early version of what's, what's in the chapter on, on, on a system of profound knowledge. And I think he had, so I recall it, he had six instead of four things. And then less than a year later, he had it down to the four he wanted to use, not the six that he'd started with. It's, so his, his brain was working on it hard, trying to get it done, because I think he was sure he didn't have a heck of a lot more time, but he managed to forge on. So in chapter one, he talks about how we're doing. And looking at it thirty five years later, there are some differences, but I'm, I'm not sure we're doing greatly. Especially most recently, a lot better. So what struck you in, in this chapter as either profound or something some old crazy man said that needs to be challenged or something that sparked you and drew your interest?
I would say the, the first paragraph, honestly, of that chapter kind of stood out that, like, it felt like it could have been written today and not thirty five years ago, like, you know, anybody wishes to live like somebody else, anybody lives better, so everyone supposes. It just feels like that could be the era of social media, and, you know, just, it, it feels kind of timeless, you know?
Yes, but he, he talks about, in here, he talks about being able to get information on the instant. And that was before the internet. Talk about being able to get information on the instant. And he points out that information isn't knowledge, so having it on the instant is intriguing, but it's not, not knowledge. It's just information.
That, I agree with that comment. That's what struck me, and I don't remember having that distinct feeling last time reading it in terms of how still appropriate, timely it is, the applicability of his concepts and thoughts, the idea of renewable. I don't, I just don't remember having that sort of reaction to the text last time. I don't know if it's a new me or a new time or a new environment, but that was what really struck me as much as anything was how appropriate it is and how glad I was to read it again. Instead of look at the, the binding on my bookshelf and remember it as a good read. So anyway, that's what struck me.
Yeah, one, one of the benefits of, of being able to have a discussion group is it forces you to do the reading and then talk with everybody else and learn from each other. And even if you've read the book twenty, thirty times, there's stuff pops up and, and you're, and you can be surprised by it. A lot of people are surprised by his definition of quality, which is sort of a description of what, it's not really a definition of quality, but it seems to serve a purpose that's rather universal.
Bill did a nice job during that, the Red Bead Experiment, the, the two day session he did, and he showed the different definitions of quality and, you know, how they progressed over time and then Demings. And it, it was stunning to actually see that, and I, I lived through a lot of that and to see where we've landed, and it's still, Deming's definition is still as relevant today as ever. And I think what most companies are focusing on, and it's very much part of the chapter, is, you know, zero defects, improving processes, but they're not thinking about innovation. And he showed that without innovation, improving performance, looking at, you know, improving the product and how it performs, you know, you are, you're not, you're not going to be a viable business going forward.
Yeah, you could be the lowest cost, highest quality buggy whip manufacturer, but you don't have much of a market.
I, I felt there were interesting parallels between that part and the work of Clayton Christensen. And the, if you've never read The Innovator's Dilemma, right? I, I felt like there was a lot of parallel. It was even some, in some spots, talking about the steel industry, which has, and the use of scrap metals in Japanese steel manufacturer, which is one of the examples from The Innovator's Dilemma. And it feels like that, 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 the, the, having a management structure which can do the discovery to essentially move into sort of the next innovation is very hard. Like, I can't, I can't actually think of good examples of, like, companies that have done this. Like Toyota managed to, to basically make a, a, a product improvement in combustion engines, but they're not a leader in EVs, for example, right? That, that, like, the transition to EV has been challenging for them, right? That, right, they just released their first one, I think, right, like this year or last year? And I, I thought that was very interesting.
Yeah, and I, and I, I, I think that, that's, that's key. And, and my observation of management at Rocketdyne over the years and even, and even at NASA is that they are very focused on doing what they do and trying to do it well, but the management gets tied up in the current and isn't looking at what could be going on, what should they be working on? The question Deming talks about, what business are we in? And reconsidering it every year or every two years, or certainly at least every five years, what business are we in? And, and that's a great question, and the definition's got to be broader than, I'm a carburetor manufacturer, I'm in the business of manufacturing carburetors. And because that's, that, that will work for a while, but eventually it's going to lead to, it's, it's going to, it's going to come to a dead end. And so what you're looking for is a continual asking yourself the question, you know, what business are we in? Dick Steele does a good, did a good job with that over the years, and Ian Brad, he's got it now there at Peaker Services. They keep looking at what.
You're breaking up, Tim.
The US in the fifties could sell anything to anybody and sold things everywhere because they're the only ones in the world who could manufacture anything. Because the world got pretty much destroyed in the mid forties, so. That was, those were the golden years for US production. It wasn't the golden years for US learning and innovation, though. It's just, it would just produce, everything they produced, they could sell.
Which led, led to bad habits.
Yes, yes.
Well, you didn't, you didn't have to think forward as much, because people would buy whatever you made because you were the only game in town.
Yeah.
And, and that's no longer the case, and it hasn't been for decades. Right, we were, right, we were talking about, like, timelines and how the, how the book feels very relevant to today. And he's talking about how, oh, this decline that we're experiencing started thirty years prior to the book, which means he's talking about the sixties. And here we are seventy, or almost seventy years on, and like, i- it's, it's not looking good.
Yeah, and it's, it's the reminder at the beginning of the book is be thankful for a good, a good competitor. Maybe that's done.
But did it, did it really start in the, I, okay, somebody brought up the book, Delevee, the Delevee book. I, I can't remember. I read that. I don't, I'm traveling, so I can't, I don't have hard, many hard copies of books. But that book by Delevee, Dem Profound Changes, is that what it's called? Was that you, Dirk, that brought it? They talk a lot about, there's a, that's a really excellent book, and they go into Taylorism a lot, right? Frederick Taylor, and that, that is way, that could be eighteen sixties. I don't know, somebody can help me, but.
Yeah.
I think this system that we're in, this, when I say system, right, it's, it's, it's bigger than just a company or corporation or how we've been behaving. My impression is the mental systems that we're bringing to this, the, the mental model, somebody else mentioned. And I know he talks about mental. So I, I think this is much deeper than, and I, I think Deming doesn't talk that way. But when I was just reading, preparing for this reading, it struck me. It struck me, yeah, he's using these examples of carburetors and stuff, but he keeps talking about transformation and what's required. It's really hard, because I think he's, he's real, real, and that's where I see my work transferred. It's like you're getting underneath to the culture that actually, like, the water that the fish are swimming in. And Bill introduced me, and I'm going to, I'll say this last thing. I don't know if you saw that video. It's really excellent. It's Peter Sengay. He's the one that wrote the Fifth Discipline. Bill has that video. I could share it, but Peter Sengay gave a really excellent description of this industrial age mindset with Taylorism. And then he said, that old trope he used in there, he said, what do fish talk about? And everybody paused. He was talking to teachers or educators, and he said, well, you could be damn sure it's not the water. And that just hit me right between the eyes, because I realized, you know what? That's, I think that's a big part of, and why it's so difficult to grasp Deming's teachings, because we grasp onto the carburetors and stuff, but anyway, I'm going to stop. Hey, I think that's kind of what pulls me into these conversations is, is like, yeah, you work on the carburetors, but then underneath is this water we all swim in.
Yeah, that, that video we found very useful at Rocketdyne, because Sengay's talking to teachers, and so. And so the, the, he's the, when, when you get to the engineers and you're trying to help them and their executives go through the transformation, they're, they're, they, they have a resistance because this isn't what's familiar to them and the resistance is, is really tough. But when you watch him talking to the teachers, the teachers in some cases are having a similar kind of resistance. Their brains haven't, haven't absorbed what you're talking about. We're, 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 it's we're looking at a way to look at the world around you. Not, not just your organization, not just what you're doing. It's a, it's a way to look at the world. When, when we thought the earth was flat, we looked at the world one way and didn't, didn't want to sail out of Portugal and, and head too far to the west because we're gonna fall off the edge. So until somebody decided to challenge, challenge that theory and sail around the world, we were trapped. And I think we've been trapped and I, I've been out of, I've been out of teaching for there, hmm, when did I leave? I don't know, seventy-nine? The, been out of teach, teaching for a long time, but holy cow, there's a system that's been trapped for a long time. I would, I see people like David Langford and others are, are working their way through, seeing if they could have an effect on that system because that is uh, one. We tried a couple of innovations where I taught school and it was like a rubber band. It, it worked for about a year, but the rubber band was so strong, it just snapped back to where it was after a year. So we're back doing what we were doing before with the same mindset.
Yeah, yeah, don't, don't go and listen to the podcast, um, sold a story about education, uh, reading education in the United States that I listened to last, earlier this year. Oh my God, it was so depressing. So depressing.
Yeah. I, I found, I, I discovered, I didn't know it at the time. I didn't have words for it. I knew what they were doing was wrong. But I didn't know how to fix it. I hadn't have been exposed to Deming, so I didn't have any way of explaining it very well, no language. So I just went about my business in my classroom. I, I followed something I picked up from Marshall McLuhan in, in college. He, he said, he says, the way you deal with a bureaucracy is you ignore it. So I should, I'm in my classroom, my thing. And, and uh, and the, the system is going on around me and a lot of what I'm doing doesn't fit with what the system wants to do. And what I discovered is they expected me, the, the way I learned to be a teacher was my job is to deliver curriculum. It's not, it's not to help people learn, it's to deliver curriculum. And I said, well, that's crazy. I had the English teacher, the head of the English department came to me and said, hey, I've heard that you're not teaching grammar. And I said, no, I'm too busy. I trying to teach these kids to write, so they have to write at least once a week and I have to correct the papers. I don't have time to teach them grammar. And he said, well, you know, there's a high correlation between people who write, who are good at grammar and people who write well. And I said, well, yeah, that's a correlation, but all the grammar in the world isn't gonna teach them to write, but if they learn to write, they probably are gonna be pretty good at grammar. So I said, I'm not, I'm not using that book. And he, he was appalled I wasn't teaching grammar. And I said, yeah, delivering more curriculum. All the grammar in the world cannot construct a sentence. It can analyze one.
That, that reminds me of uh, John Taylor Gatto's work, right? He was a educator in New York and wrote a bunch of books about how like school, he was actually like fighting against the school he taught in.
So Bill, a little while back. I muted.
Um, no, we can hear.
Sorry, Ben, I'm cutting you off.
No, I'm saying we can hear you.
Okay, um. And Bill, a couple of years ago, I was putting something together and we're talking about teaching and, and Bill said to me, there's no such thing as teaching. Uh, what? It's, it's facilitated learning. That's what you should call it. I said, okay, that's interesting. And, and when you think about teaching, a teacher can do what a teacher does. And it doesn't matter if the classroom is populated with students or not. The actions are still the same. A teacher could stand in front, and like you said, Tim, you're delivering curriculum. But the aim of the system, the classroom of the system, teachers and students, is for the student to learn. If the students start learning, the action of the teacher is completely null and void. So I've been, and I know a lot of teachers, my stepdaughter is a teacher and, or was a teacher. She's retired now, but she stepped away from the, the profession. But I always try to get her into, to the mode of thinking of you're not just, if you're not teaching, if nobody's learning. I know you can stand in front of the class and do what you do, and I'm sure you're good at it. But without the closed loop system of understanding whether your students are learning or not, how do you really know that you're doing a good thing? You can, you can do a really good job of reading stuff out of a book. But if you don't have the closed loop, knowing that the kids are learning anything, then all you're doing is acting. And you're not teaching. That's something completely different, so.
That, that system has some other purpose, but it isn't, it isn't helping children learn. We don't, we don't know what that purpose might be. Maybe, maybe it's to, I don't know, a- as Akoff used to say, keep the tenured faculty in the style to which they've grown accustomed.
I did, I did discover something during my career is that I, I, the students always learned. But most frequently they learn something I wasn't teaching. And I also, I didn't recognize it at the time, but part of the difficulty is curriculum presumes that you know what the person who's coming to learn has to learn. And so you're gonna tell him what he has to learn. The best learning happens, in fact, the only learning happens, when the person that is looking to learn says, this is what I wanna learn. And then you help with that. If you tell him what he needs to learn, he may or may not pay some attention. But that's not gonna be effective. And we're trapped in this idea of delivering curriculum and you have to have a curriculum. And the curriculum means that people have to do this, that, and the other thing. And you don't let them think and you don't let them you, you start to crush their innate curiosity. You don't, you, you can't really crush it because they're always gonna find something to be curious about. But they don't get the satisfaction uh, of their innate curiosity in a school system that is run and organized and whose mental model is the one we've got. It just, it, it doesn't happen. And I think mental models is a, is a, is a, a good, a good thing to keep around and think about. That's uh, when Rudy Hernandez, the guy that came up with into, came up with in thinking, we, we've got this, we, we, we need to keep thinking about our own thinking and, and Al, this went often in sessions like this. Would often ask an interesting question and he, he was asking it honestly. Because Deming talks about people who have no knowledge, trying to share that knowledge with other people and he calls them quacks. And so, so Al asked this great question that we have to keep asking ourselves, how do we know we're not quacks?
That's a beautiful question.
Question?
It's a great question, you know, that's, if you're a hack, how would you know? And so if we don't ask ourselves are, are, how do we, how do we know we're not quacks if we don't have a way of figuring out that hey, maybe we are quacks. Maybe we need to change all of this and all of that. Maybe we're off the deep end. But I, I think it's worth asking the question every once in a while. And then uh, as I've asked it over the years, I don't, I, I don't believe I ever came to the conclusion we're quacks. I came to the conclusion that some of the things we have we can change and we've been trying to change them in ways that make what we're talking about or thinking about different from Deming, but not at odds with Deming. And some, some people we've worked with get trapped in if Deming didn't say it, it does, there's, you know, it's, it's a Bible kind of a thing and they get trapped. It's what, what the Bible says. I remember somebody handing out bands that's, that used to say what would Deming do? And I said, the question is what would you do with your understanding, not what Deming would do?
Yeah, that, that's kind of what I was getting at earlier, Tim, is, you know, with the, the Black, the Six Sigma program is very, very prescriptive. It's a set of tools that thou shalt use in a very particular order, in a very particular way. And, you know, and it's a, there's no, um, there's really no learning. It's just very automaton type behavior that's, that's presented in the program. But with Deming, it's not a set of tools, it's a set of attitudes. And um, I think Gypsy had a really good thing where her, her whole thing was about, at least from what I gather, was about trust within an organization. If you start with trust, then all kinds of stuff happens very positively start to happen. So um, but how do you get the trust? Well, there's not a recipe for that, but you start with that. And you figure out ways to engender trust within the staff. And then from that, a healthy organization starts. And you get innovation, you get productivity, you get co-op, collaboration, cooperation, excellent teamwork. But there's no, I don't think Deming is ever prescriptive in any of that stuff. You just start and or Deming through Gypsy, so start with trust and then go from there. So. Yeah, that's, that's what I.
One of the things I've gotten in the habit of over the years, because I, I've taught tools and like statistical process control and uh, cause analysis and other kinds of things. And I always preface anything I'm doing with a tool with this tool is just a tool. And what's going to affect how well you can influence the world around you is your worldview. And the tool ain't gonna do it. The tool is just a tool. Yeah, that got critical thinking tools. We've got, you know, um, six thinking hats and lateral thinking, those are all great tools. But what's gonna affect the world around you is your worldview and those tools can be used, but those tools don't give you a worldview.
Yeah, we use them differently depending on our worldview.
Yes.
Right, um, having, having a worldview, I, I feel like I work with a lot of folks who maybe they have a worldview, but they don't share, right? So they're, right, we, I live in organizations where, where I have a, I have a solid like philosophy about how I approach problems, but trying to like get others to share how they're thinking about them. So I can understand like everyone's thinking about it so that we can craft solutions that will work for the way they think about problems. Like, all I can do is be like, he, here's an, here's a way of going about solving a problem or making something more visible or improving our process. But I, it's very hard to like get people to to like adopt new, new frames or learn new frames, right? It's challenging.
Yes.
I think it goes back to the education problem we were talking about before.
Yeah. And sometimes the, the most frequent problem I faced with helping people grasp what we're talking about and put it into effect is there's the, the, the that the, as Deming says, newer, new knowledge comes from outside and by invitation. And, and if you're like in our school system today, all those people in the classroom did not invite the curriculum they're about to get. So they're not gonna get anything new. And so the, the activity becomes when I'm dealing with somebody who's new to Deming and want to introduce it, is how do I ask the questions that will stimulate that person's curiosity? So we can start talking about it. So it's learning how to ask a question that will help the mental model start to, start to, start to act and you start to recognize what your mental model is. And the great news about mental models is you can change them whenever you want. And if you, if you think about them and you know you have them and you understand them. And if you have multiple ones, you can use whichever one happens to fit the moment. Uh, but if you don't even recognize you have a mental model, you don't even recognize, i- it's hard for you to you don't recognize that your mental mo- model is disallowing you from understanding what, what's being, what's being talked about and what somebody is trying to offer you.
I like that approach, Bill, because what it allows you to, excuse me, Tim, is allows you to assess, they may already have a solid foundation that, because assuming that they're not uh, familiar with Deming or Red, doesn't mean that they don't, you know, understand some of those uh, principles that he has. Um, and you know, Ben, to your point, I think some people don't even think about them having a worldview. Some people don't have a clue that they actually have a worldview that's been developed over the years. And when you can start to bring that out and start to get them to talk about how they think and you know, what sort of, what are, what sort of foundations got them to where they're at. Um, what a great, what a great conversation to have with people.
Right, it's the metacognition conversation, right? And that, right, this is, this is the field of philosophy, right? Is this metacognition discussion. And we don't, it's not like we train the classics anymore, right? It's not, right, we don't read Socrates. We don't, we don't interact with those, those works so much. Um, and we have all sorts of things that are built on top of them, but we don't interact with those either. Um, philosophy has a very deep tradition and, and we, we just don't, we don't interact with it enough.
I think one thing that's, that's key, it has been key in, in my uh, teaching over the years of systems thinking as well as coaching uh, teams from that perspective. Uh, is to just invite people to think about what I think, what I think of as the fact that we all see the world differently. And at the same time, we assume that everyone else sees it the way we see it. So it's an interesting little, you know, position that we put ourselves in. Um, which is why we don't often share our thinking because we just figure you get it, you see it what I see it. I don't have to explain anything. Uh, but that's where we end up, you know, in those, in conflicts, uh, some, some, some worse than others. Uh, and so to have a conversation about, you know, no matter how similar, you know, Tim and I look right now. We, we see, we see the world differently, uh, because we've had different experiences for a lot of years. Uh, and that's just, you know, that's not a judgmental thing. It's just a thing to be aware of. And sometimes that, that creates an opening for folks. It's like, it's okay, you know, it's okay to ask someone else about their thinking. How did they get to this idea or this conclusion? I used to, there used to be a fellow, or there was a fellow named John Bergstrom, who was a good friend of, of mine and Tim and Bill Bellows and uh, he did a lot of work at the end-to-end thinking, teaching um, something called the mutual learning model. Uh, which was developed by Chris Argurus and today is popularized by uh, Roger Schwartz and his book, uh, The Skilled Facilitator, among others. And the notion that, you know, we, we see things differently, uh, we have to be curious about you know, how do you see it? And so often I, I boil down, you know, a team dynamic, uh, a fix, so to speak, for a team dynamic is to say, here's how I see it. How do you see it? And if we can do that with some genuineness and sincerity, uh, can take us a long ways.
And there, there, we have to back away from what, what I see a lot of us doing, which is recognizing that whoever we're dealing with is different and their thinking is different. But then lapsing into my thinking is better than their thinking. It's not a contest. It's a learning experience if you approach it properly.
Um, the, what I was reading, um, right, I think, uh, Bill and, um, Um, the, what I was reading, um, right, I think, uh, Bill and, um, was talking about this on the Deming podcast, they were talking about, um, the tyranny of merit. And that, that book was really interesting from that perspective because it's like, like we, we basically cut because of the way we've decided to structure things, we've cut a lot of people out of the conversation, but we collectively have to, have to make society and so you can't cut forty people, forty percent of people out or more, like, right? They, it's, that's just not a viable approach. And we can see today like, well, why that is not viable.
I've heard it, uh, I was listening to a podcast and they were talking about, um, tribalism versus being of a tribe. And I think it gets to that point that you are part of a tribe, no matter how you define it. Um, but being part of that tribe does not mean tribalism, um, where you start to cut people out, right? And, and I thought that was, I hadn't, I'd never heard that before, I thought that was, uh, quite profound.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good observation, recognizing that certainly we're tribal. And that makes sense, families are a tribe, if you will, and all of that, it makes sense, but that doesn't mean you have to be exclusive or confrontational, you can.
Yeah, how could we, how can we encourage belonging without othering?
Yes, yes. Other, other.
How do we identify ourselves, our role or where we are as part of an organization or a system? Do we identify as a leader or a willing worker or manager or buyer or an engineer or say whatever? Parent, spouse, all those things affect our understanding of what tribe we're in. And I think affect how we think and how we react. And if we're aware of our thinking, that we are identifying in the moment of as being part of tribe A, B, or C, um, will help us, allow us to understand how are we behaving, interacting? Um, and how are we affecting the situation each other? Um, and that was one thing I remember learning, I don't remember her name, but she did an ongoing discussion, talk about identifying and, and the idea of how you perceive your identity. And I, I have never forgotten that, um, so that's what reminded me of that.
That's, uh, that's the thing too, that, that, that I think is, is great when you can, when you can help others understand that, that, that they have an identity and it's not singular and they have a community. And they can make their community as big as they want because the, they're, they're, it's not as if they're drawing lines around anywhere. Deming talks about expanding the system. And the great thing, you can contract the system and you can expand the system. And by doing that, you can, you can learn different things. And it, it's such a great thing because whatever boundary you put around a system is in your head, it doesn't exist. The universe doesn't have boundaries. There's, all these, uh, the, all, all the definitions we have are, there are so many things across the boundaries. It's, it's not about boundaries, it's about everything's connected to everything else. And we, and we want to look at that and see in what ways we are gonna be with a family in that situation. And sometimes take part of the family with another situation and sometimes go off on your own and join another group. And there, and it, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be separatism. It's seeing yourself as an individual and belonging to groups. Groups who are, who are systems, if you will, and have an approach to the world. After all, we're, we're really seven billion individual systems. But there's a, there's a lot of overlap in the way we see the world so that we can cooperate. And the, and the more we can ask ourselves, how else, how else could I cooperate? How else could I learn? I think is valuable. So anything in chapter one? Anything else in chapter one that's stri- struck you or might be worth chasing down? I always liked the idea that the customers don't invent anything, even though the world around us kind of thinks the customer is the one who forces all these changes. And the fact that loyal customers are not enough.
The, the loyal customers thing reminded me, what is it, the Malcolm Gladwell thousand true fans thing, right? Um, where like, if you want to be successful, if you can get a thousand true fans who will give you a hundred dollars a year, you're, you're pretty well set. But, but right, innovation, innovation feels like the, the, the right, innovation is the sort of what is produced by education, right? It, it's the precipitate of education, essentially, right? And, and I, I, I don't know if that's like, right, you, you can't really control it. It's you, you can go out and learn new things and innovation should just spontaneously happen out of that, which feels really, really weird.
It's interesting with innovation, um, we had a, we had one of the first sets of the, I think World Poop came out with the front load washer and dryers, right? And they were bullet, literally bulletproof, they were incredible, uh, piece of equipment. And we had a local guy that did maintenance on them and when the second gen came out, he said, if, if I have to charge you a hundred bucks a year to come and maintain this for you, you keep it. Said, because the next generation was terrible and then the third generation. So we have innovation, we have innovations that happen and then we have the cheapening of that very innovation that turns them into garbage. Another appliance related one is the, all the appliances that have refrigerators that have all the, the pass-throughs, right? So you got ice and water and all those things. And now they're pushing very basic refrigerators, you have to open the door up for the water dispenser because they found that if you put an ice maker in a refrigerator, you have two systems fighting each other. And then you're opening up that space to the outside with those, those, you know, indoor, uh, dispensers. And so the new innovation is stop doing that. Right, the, the new appliances work better if you take some of the innovation away, some of the innovation away and stop those systems from fighting each other. So I'm, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm blown away by what innovations we have seen and what we've literally gone backwards in, in many ways because we either stopped the innovation and then cheapened it, or we actually, the innovation took us so far and we said, that's not what we need. Says, let's go back to just having good refrigerators that don't fail. Right, they don't have compressors that will fail once a year and you have to put a couple hundred bucks into the damn thing. Um, so I, I love innovation, but I, just watching how at least the US and a lot of the world is doing innovation. Um, I, I think it's innovation for innovation's sake.
You think that's innovation or, um, maybe like the second generation, second, third generation? Isn't that when a good product becomes industrialized and it's in, uh, uh, simplifying the production sometimes is, will compromise the quality of the product going through? And the first one, first gen has always got all the love and ten, all the attention given to it, put together, right? Second and third generation, okay, we got it down. We can reduce costs by doing this, that and hire cheaper labor to put it together on skilled labor. And so that's where, so I, I, I don't see that as, I don't know if that's innovation to simplify, I think it's just the downside of, of too much industrialization, too much, have to some cost reduction and, and volume.
Yeah, I would add to that, like I, I heard somewhere, I forget who said it, that the worst innovation in mankind was the invention of the spreadsheet. And, you know, cause it enabled, it enabled us to make these, um, you know, cost benefit analysis to say, I'm gonna put a cheaper part in the, in the washing machine or, you know, change the seal or use a lower quality motor, um, and things like that, you know, because we'll save X number of dollars over this many units and things like that. Or, you know, we can put this many less peanuts in the plane and, you know, it, nobody, the customer won't notice and we'll save this much fuel and things like that, you know, it's like, uh, it's this, uh, it is that cost reduction mindset in the, in the, um, the guise of efficiency is quality type of thing.
Um, that, that article I just linked in the chat, uh, the capitalist dilemma, that's another, then their Clayton Christensen thing where he was talking about the types of innovation. And what he's talking about in there is how, um, we seem to have a society kind of gone in the direction of focusing on what he calls efficiency innovations, because they're the easiest ones to justify cost-wise. Because you're like, I made it more efficient, I changed out the washer for a cheaper washer. Now we save like a dollar on every unit, right? And, and so we, because of the way we structure finance and the focus of on finance in our organizations, um, efficiency or innovations look like the best innovations and those are the only ones you do. And now you're missing out on all of the benefits of doing all the other kinds of innovation, which are improving the product, like making the next version of the product that is better and has more features and whatever. Or the fundamental, like do fundamental research, right? What, what large, um, companies do fundamental research in like physics anymore, right? And that, that's a, the, the realm of government now almost entirely. And, and it was a super interesting like, uh, take on, on sort of that aspect of thing.
Yeah, the, the days of, uh, Ma Bell and the Bell Labs where there was a lot of money going into pure research and pure sci- people just going out, not trying to figure out how to make telephones better, just trying to learn more about science. And just turn all those people loose and fund them and look at all the great things that happen. And so there's a cost associated with that. But if you take a long view, there's a huge benefit, uh, a return. And even if you're a telephone company, all of the stuff that came out of the Bell Labs, some of it helped telephones. But a lot of it had nothing to do with telephones.
Computerized switching. In terms of the telephone system has to be like one of the most valuable things they ever invented, though it put tel- um, operators out of business and support operators, right? But automated switching has to have been worth something, it has been a huge boon to all of us. And I guess then went into like the entire, like the internet is essentially built on the same concept, right?
Deming also in this chapter, he's, he's try, I always found it interesting, uh, in, in the preface. He, 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 he's, the aim of this book is to help the learner, but he's trying to help transform management's thinking. But it's, it seems like telling them that, that they've created a, a tyranny. And then telling them that they're responsible for the quality of the product, not the guy on the shop floor. All of that stuff has gotta get management all tied up in knots and mad and, and sort of hanging back. So that's kind of interesting that he pushes in this chapter, the, the idea that management is the one who owns the system, decides where the money's gonna be spent or the resources are gonna be spent. Who's gonna get trained, what they're gonna get trained in, all of that stuff. So when something comes out the other end that they don't like, uh, they're running around looking for who to blame. And the, the blame lies with them, that John Bergstrom, who, who Steve mentioned earlier, he used to say, the system you have is perfectly designed to get the result you're getting. When I used to have executives come to me all the time and say, the system's broken, we gotta fix it. He said, the system's not broken. I said, what do you mean this happened? And I said, I know, I know that happened. What you're doing is gonna have that happen sometimes. Well, it's broken, no, it's not broken. This is, I, I tell them, you think, you think your system's a Formula One racer. Your system's a Mercury villager. And that Mercury villager is functioning perfectly, it just ain't a Formula One racer. If you want to be a, have a Formula One racer, you need to change something rather drastically. The system is rarely broken. It's functioning the way it's been set up to function or allowed to function. And you need to be able to distinguish between whether you, whether the system's broken or whether it, the system's okay and the system sucks.
So can we, can we talk a little bit about that? Cause I, that struck me too, like the red beads experiment and this conversation, cause um, that struck me too, that in fact, I was just looking at that, are people in the plants are responsible, right? Like that's the slogan, I'm looking in chapter one, how are we doing? I don't know what page, saying, the president of the company wrote in a journal, are people in the plants are responsible for their own product and for its quality? And Deming writes right after, they are not, period. And then he goes on, so can you, can we talk? Cause I, I, I struggle with that, even though I kind of, right, I have these conversations or I listen, but it's hard to wrap my head around like the red bead and then the, the willing workers, it seems like everybody's a victim, frankly. I, I, I like even the, the manager, right? We're all just in this system, even the leaders, so. And I'm not asking for a fix, but I'm just saying, uh, how does one go into those systems and not like you're the willing worker? And then if you're not a lea- let's say if you are, uh, the leader at the top, like Dick Steele or somebody is a CEO of a smaller company, that to me seems like you've got a chance. But anything else, I don't really see much chance in, I, I hate to be this pessimistic, but I don't see much chance for transformation at, at these other levels of such complexity. So I'm gonna stop there and sorry to be down, but I'm trying to have connect it with.
No, we used to, we used to talk about the fact that a company that's been going for a long time and has a certain mental model and a way of doing things, especially a big company is probably gonna be harder to change than starting up a new company. And, and, and trying to apply Deming's ideas to that and growing that, that might be easier to do. Um, and I remember some people that worked with Deming who, who talked about with him, you know, this is really hard, we can't get these, these, the, the, some of the people lower down in the organization are getting this, but the guys at the top and the gals at the top just aren't getting it. And Deming in one of his pessimistic, uh, days, I guess he was having, he, he said, sometimes you just have to wait for people to die. Meaning educate the, the one you can educate and they will work their way up in the system as the people above them die.
Change will come one funeral at a time.
Yep. And, and the, 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 the idea, the, the willing workers is certainly at the mercy of whatever system you put them in. I'm, it's, he has, in, in the, in the red bead experiment, he purposely has absolutely no control. But in organizations, you try to give people control. But in essence, they're constrained by everything around them, the, the mental models, the, 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 the procedures, the rules, the regulations, the training. And it's really, when you want to transform an organization, you can try to start at the bottom and work your way up, but it's gonna be decades if you make it happen. And it's really difficult. What we found at Rockadine is you can transform parts of a relatively big organization and have them functioning in a way that's close to what Deming was talking about and is effective. And, 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 and you would expect to be able to spread it, but it doesn't always spread, there is resistance. And you, and, and if, if, if you, you can be disgruntled and annoyed by it, but what you really need to do is look at how, how you can spread it. Okay, what can I do to spread? Several times I thought about leaving Rockadine and going somewhere else. And then if I figured out, well, at least they know who I am and have some reputation that they may or may not like here. So going somewhere else is starting over with everything. So I, there's, that's, that's not viable.
Yeah, should I, should have stuck at, uh, some of my earlier drops, right? It feels like, uh, uh, often I'm just doing the same. Often I'm just doing the same thing over and over. Like I take whatever I learned at the last one, I can bring it along. But it's like, okay, what's the situation here? Oh, these dozen things are broken. But the right, my my view for when to leave has always been like, how much resistance am I getting from management? Am I going to be able to make? Headway on this? And at some point I just have to give up and move on, right? It's challenging. Especially in like, um, I like working in like orgs with like two hundred to four hundred people. I find that that's the like right size where you can. Like kind of affect things from the type of work I do.
I was gonna mention to Scott, when I started talking about. When you look at an individual, this is kind of related to this, where the their results, the results that we're seeing with an individual is, you know, ninety five plus percent. Um, the outcome of the system and not their individual work. And when you start saying that, it gets people to start to scratch their head and go. How is that so? And I found that that was a great way to introduce them to the the concept that you're talking about. And then focusing on what can they do to improve their part of the system. And. Understand and talk about the other things that are impacting them. But at this point, there's not necessarily anything they can do other than serve for those thing up. And if your team leaders or supervisors, others will start to. Sort of serve those upwards and let the organization know that's what's happening. I think that's a good way of getting started. And so I. I've found that in organizations, even if top management's not buying into this. At a very small level, you can start to introduce this type of thinking into a team. Um, and it will transform how their work is. And people will start to say, what is going on in your with your team, right? What's happening there? Because. They are actually having and seeing joy because they're starting to understand. How the system works and they and not as so much as the victim, because when you first say that, it appears that that's what you're saying. But then you go, but what can we do? To improve the parts that we have, right? And some will say, well, that's sub optimization and you're you know, you're not gonna you what you're doing in your small area could impact agreed. But most of the things that happen, like a team in a manufacturing setting in a in a cell. Mostly you're not gonna have an impact on the entire system. In fact, it should help things. Um, so. Scott, I just thought that having that initial conversation about, you know, just think about when you see something happen. Think about the system causing that. And that's not necessarily the person. Um, and then it gets people to think a little bit differently. And once that start to spread. Um, you have a whole different view of, you know, how work can be done and how you can solve problems, at least locally. And without without having someone approve it, that you guys could do this, because all they're gonna see is, you know, improvement at at that at that level.
Exactly. I I think that's a great point, Mike. And you know, if a team, so imagine a, I I don't know, I I work a lot in state government. Coaching teams and, you know, maybe there's a a a management team that's. Part of a much larger agency, but they have a department or they have a, you know, a section. And if some kind of transformation occurs there. They can do their work better, shall we say. But when they turn outward. And looking, you know, upward or, you know, to peers and that sort of thing. Their behavior is different, uh, because they have an appreciation of the system and variation, et cetera. And we haven't even talked about Deming. We're just, you know, trying to get this different awareness. And the way that it manifests and and takes advantage of the, you know, the the fact of interdependence. Is that they ask different different kinds of questions of each other, of their peers and other organ, you know, other parts of the organization upward. Uh, you know, questions around resource allocation and so on. And so, you know, not not necessarily, not always questioning a decision. But asking in the, you know, the course of day to day management and business, asking different kinds of questions uh in staff meetings and so on. And that gets noticed. It can also get squashed, but it does get noticed, yeah.
Uh, yeah, squash is always always fun. Go, you go and accidentally are like, hey, other team. I I have an idea about how to do the thing we're trying to do because I need to do it too. And you share ideas and then and then their managers come in or like, you can't work on that anymore. That's happened to me. And you just go work on something else.
Find someone else, yeah. There's very little applause.
Yeah. I've always um found that the, right, it felt like uh Deming was always very confrontational with management. And I wonder if that confrontational attitude maybe. Made adoption more difficult, like, right? Because I feel like like the the one maybe negative aspect of that is. Then it puts management essentially on the defensive and and it is hard to learn when you are antagonized. And I that's always been like, like a question I've had, right? It it right. He he's very right, right? He's he's had, right, every, I've heard many stories, right?
I I I like the way you're thinking though, what, but what if we take? Who would be a positive example that you could put out there for somebody that you envision?
Well, right, I don't write the the, I guess the challenge is, is right. Uh, think about it in terms of like psychotherapy. Um, psychotherapy is generally ineffective if you are forced into it, right? Court ordered psychiatric treatment ain't gonna work very well. But for psychotherapy to be effective, right, our psychotherapist friend of mine, she's like, you have to be coming to it yourself. So how do you get like Deming ideas into an organization without the management actually realizing they want to take this? In, right? And then and then I worry about if their first encounters like this is like beating on management, then turns them off the whole thing. And so. Like we're like. Like maybe the the existing materials aren't the right starting point for like interacting positively with Deming's work.
We talk a lot about disruptive technology and. Culture, but we don't talk about who's creating the disruptive technology. And until. At least I found that interesting, um, this conversation because I realized in practice, probably a lot of the the Deming people, you realize. Uh, right, you keep your mouth shut, because just to say some of this stuff is disruptive. And I think that's. Why it feels confrontational. I'm not really sure he's confrontational so much as he's just. He's breaking those mental model. He's shattering sometimes mental models. People are very get. I know, I've been through my, right, we all.
Very uncomfortable.
It is. And I I don't know how you're, that's why I was asking for examples of people. And frankly, you could have this coddling approach and soft and yeah, that's a personality. And I agree, Deming. Was kind of rough and gruff, grumbly and grouchy old man. But you know, he had that wisdom aspect too, like the grandfather. And that was his approach. I think that's why some of those other bro books actually hit some of the same things. The principles of Deming, but just they don't use it like the Deming profound knowledge, Sange. We talked a lot about it. So um anyway, I I I appreciate the. The ideas and uh what what we're sharing. So I just wanted to chime in.
I just posted a, I don't know if you guys are uh. Heard a guy and his name is Bob Emiliani. He's on, he's prolific on. On LinkedIn and he's a huge critic of what I would call big lean. So like the Lean Enterprise Institute, how we've brought lean into this country. He he just, he is just going to town. And he lately has been going after Deming. But I just posted this, he he calls it comparing the system of profound knowledge to the system of profound privilege. And classic management. And if you look at it, what you'll find is a lot of adoption, especially companies that say that they're lean. They're very open to lean from senior management down and they see it as a deployment of tools. But if you start talking Deming and changing the way you think and the way people solve problems. That's going up directly against the system of profound privilege. And I've found that when you say that to people, they're like. And so I've showed them this chart and it's exactly what you're up against. And so sometimes. The way to do this is if I, and I try to work now with smaller companies. Um, and so the largest companies I worked for in my corporate career were two, three hundred million dollar companies. So not huge, but big enough. And I found that when you work with smaller companies, fifty to a hundred million, even smaller. My intent is to work both with senior leaders and then with teams on the floor, introducing the same concepts. And so you've got a tops down look at it and then a bottoms up look at it. And if you can get the the senior management to start thinking this way, it's a huge breakthrough. But some companies, I have a son that's working for a very large company. And so I'm introducing him to all these concepts. I said, just do it in your team. I said, you don't have to have permission. Nothing you're doing is going to be against any any policies of your company. But I said, you're gonna be one of the best damn leaders I've ever seen, right? You're gonna be able to lead and manage better than anybody else in the company. You're gonna have a better understanding of systems. And I said, if that doesn't get you promoted, if it gets you fired, good, move on and find another company that's open, open to that. I mean, he and he's very young and he's he's very capable. So I'm instilling in him. You know, what you're seeing in this company, it's about a billion dollar company. I said, this is how American companies operate. And if you want to fight that, you know, have at it, Deming tried. But I said, one by one, so. Me as a consultant, now I know I can go out and interview and talk to companies. And if they're open to doing this, then fine. If they're not. Good, because I don't want to work with you, right? If you are not open to doing this, then let's not do it. And I I'm fine, I'll move on. But I know that if you use these, these, this type of thinking, these type of tools in the right way, you will change. The lives of the people working there. And that's half their their, you know, their waking hours is working or thinking about working. So. What a great gift that we can give to people as we do this. I think it's fantastic. And I'll get off my soapbox now, thanks.
When I think about um, you know, people asking different kinds of questions. And and being aware of the kinds of questions they're they're asking. Uh, one thing that I often do, which I think is kind of imitating Dr. Deming. When I, when I come to a new team and let's imagine that they're a, you know, an executive leadership team or some type of a leadership team. And we do introductions. And everyone wants to say, you know, their job title and how long they've been doing this and how much responsibility they have. And I try to find a way to ask them that, what I think is a is a classic Deming question, which is. Who depends on you to do their work and who do you depend on to do your work?
Yes.
I don't often do that in a, in the, you know, actual blunt, you know, uh introduction time. But in small group conversations, you know, in trios or pairs and then bring it into the conversation. Uh, because that is something that that question and the response to it does not occur much in organizations.
Yeah, we were talking earlier about the the mechanic or the machinist or the the willing worker there. That's the question. Who who depends on me? Who do I depend on? And and exploring that and looking and saying, well, I drill this hole. What the hell? This is, what is this hole for? Who, does somebody using it to look in and see how well the machinery is operating? Or are they gonna put a a screw in it? What the? Just asking, how do I fit in? You would like management to be telling people how they fit in, but you can't count on that. You can, if you're a manager yourself, you can help. The people reporting to you start asking questions like. Who depends on me and who do I depend on? And and start to have them talk to each other. So I, yeah, I think that's the, I I think you can get a lot done it within your sphere of influence. Changing the whole organization certainly is a lot tougher and takes a lot longer.
Well, right, it's right. Working effectively anywhere is about trying to essentially. Build a collective understanding of what you're trying to do, right? And having all these conversations is. Hard and exhausting. And the more, right, the longer, right, the larger your uh your area of influence. The more people you're talking to. Um, right, I've worked in a lot of organizations where I'm the sole person who does my specialty. So I work with everybody, right? I work with every engineer in the organization where I'm currently employed. And and that's a, it's just a lot of work, right? And having and trying to like, how can I help you today? Right? And trying to like make things better, but it's just a lot.
Yeah, it's the the size of the system thing is Deming talks about. The larger the system that you can manage. The more powerful things can happen, but the harder it is to manage because it's a large system.
I I wonder if that points to trying to have smaller interconnected systems. Right? Where the where the units are smaller is actually better, like. Or whether, but then you have the communications overheads problems like that Fred Brooks talks about in the mythical man month. Right, so. Like, how do you, how do you organize smaller units to do large things, right? Trade offs.
Yeah, I think it, Deming talks a little bit about it here, but the. And we talked, it came up in the conversation, the whole financial system is not very supportive. I mean, you you you're corporations are required to report to the SEC quarterly. And I remember working for Rocketine over the years and the the they. Part of Boeing, uh Jim Aba had to report quarterly to the SEC. How the space and communication chunk of of Boeing was doing. And clearly it was up and down each quarter. I started. I I, when I saw one of those and saw what he wrote explaining why it was different from the last quarter, I said, okay. So I got twenty four quarters worth of data on the two or three things he was looking at, like margin and. Income and I don't know what the what the third one was. And I plotted them over time and they're. Absolutely stable system. Got an average there and there's a little up and down and every, 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 every time it goes up or goes down. He has an explanation for why it went up or down because he has to have an explanation. It's a law. The explanation is there's variation in the world. That's the explanation.
So uh, I have a question, I guess, with that because. Being born in Little Rock. And my father uh played leather helmet football with the children of the first investment banker. And then when you think of Central High. And I had this funny uncle who never finished high school, but he gave me a steam engine as a kid. So I'd be wondering about how does this thing really work? And when you think of power, finance, Central High. Eisenhower phobus. There was a point where. The the banking family would contact my father to ring in his brother. He would stir up the politics enough off camera to where then the legislative. Delegation, they would start trying to get back at the financial people, but they buy both sides of the aisle. So my question sort of is more in where is the boundary? Of huge financial banking houses when now. The former governor of Arkansas is the ambassador to Jerusalem or or Israel. And the the head of the other banking house, the Stevens, is now the. Ambassador to England. And and to understand that Stevens, just these friendships may not show up. In a Deming style, it's not that they may not hear of it, but to. Know what is stable and not because people will say to me, where are you working? As if it's a punitive sort of work to be validated or within nonprofits. It's a different type of work experience or volunteerism. But who's really able to monetize? Better, not just efficiency, it's effectiveness, because sometimes a lot of lives are being lost. And I was able to survive that experience of. First, I mean, want to go out to hear Deming in St. Louis. I stood up and asked him about mental health. And he would pause and then you'd have further conversations, but it is this curious way to. Try to even frame a question.
Yeah.
And depending on who's in your team. Or around, they may want to hear it, they may not. And depending on who's in your team or around, they may wanna hear it, they may not. But my ex, she worked in the building, met out in Oklahoma that would be blown up. And if we hadn't moved to Florida. It's just horrific for, challenge for people to work in a government, governing agency. And then understand the madness that, and anger people have. So any response, I'm just, I'm curious about this. Because this really focuses in people who are really at the edge or understanding self-organizing systems. But to go as deep as the river, you know, what's, what's really happening out there where you can even try to clean up the river.
Yeah, those are some powerful questions, Bill. Unfortunately, we're at, almost at the end of our time, aren't we Tim or not?
Yeah, yeah, we're, I don't think it automatically shuts me off, but it, it, well. The big screen on the right of me just turned on. I don't know what that means, but so something's to, to end. I wanna thank you all for the, uh, for the conversation and the willingness to share. My tech guy is asleep behind me. Getting help here, I don't need. Yes, I'm in Brazil at the moment.
Oh, wow. Brilliant.
Very good.
I need to go myself, I'll, I'll see you all next week.
Thank you, buddy. Nice meeting y'all.
Bye y'all.
I'll send you a reading list for next, next week. Ciao.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So did you, did you start at central time, Pacific time, eastern time? Did you start at? Central time.
Pacific time, it's, it's, uh, was seven o'clock here.
Cause I was thinking specific time and I was thinking. Six or seven o'clock is when to come on. So I was late coming, but thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's seven in Rio, but it was three in, uh, Pacific time. We stick with Pacific time, because that's where I am most of the time.
Thank you.
Rio, Rio, Rio's a lot, Rio's a lot, here it goes again.